Gives us more attitude than they have.
I don't know, this thing just seems like it gets really.
You know, you're supposed to have, you know, first left. You put as much as you can to give us the most.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Are we waiting on Holly?
No, she's not coming.
Okay. So you're gonna take care of it then? Okay. We'll bring the city council meeting for May tenth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. And we'll start by doing a pledge of allegiance. So if you will stand, if you can, remove your head here. Okay, we'll start with call to order. We'll have council members, Kim Helgason.
Here.
Dan Regical.
Present.
Mary Bailey.
Here.
Here. Molly Ryan is excused. Mayor Doug Henke is here. We have a city administrator, Mark Balsing. City engineer, Derek Cohen. City attorney, Scott Rigs.
Here.
And Kathy from finances here. We have Seda from Chris is here. Public Works Wayne Eric. We have, let's see, right from police department, we have Brian Holmeyer. And various other citizens from Kenyon and Michelle from the Kenyon leader. So everybody is here on that. So we'll go on with citizens' comments. Are there any comments to be made by citizens here at the time? Go one more time. Any comments? Sorry about that, Jeff. If you aren't here, that's late. I'm sorry. Okay, no citizens' comments, so that's how it goes. We can go with adopt the agenda. Is there any changes on on the agenda?
Oh. Um, no.
Okay, and we need to have the approval of the agenda?
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as it is.
How about a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made to adopt the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay. Now we can do the consent agenda along with approval of minutes and appointments. And we can do finance all at the same time.
I'll move approval of those items.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions on it? If not, all of those in favor of it. Have accepted the consent agenda, approval of the minutes and appointments and financials, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay. Okay. Presentations, public hearings, recognitions, proclamations. First one on the list will be annual municipal prosecution report and attorney A.J. Lindell from Jacobson Law Firm. Yeah, just speak up, whichever you, yeah, there you go, good and loud.
I like to speak from the dice.
Okay.
I am A.J. Lindell. I'm an attorney at the Jacobson Law Firm. I'm sure you all remember or know David Jacobson. I started there a little more than a year ago and have basically taken on the responsibility for the prosecution matters for the city of Kenyon. As you may know, the city of Kenyon has a statutory obligation to provide for the prosecution of adult misdemeanor, certain designated gross misdemeanor offenses and petty misdemeanor offenses. That's rooted in Minnesota statutes four eight four dot eight seven subdivision three. The city of Kenyon has contracted with the Jacobson Law Firm since September of two thousand and eleven to provide those services. I'm relatively new to it, being only there for a year, but David has been providing services for the balance of it. I see that the agenda is packed full, so I'm going to try to give you the thirty thousand foot view here and I know that those that we did provide the actual report a few months back. So the total prosecuted offenses for the year twenty twenty-one was a hundred and fifty-nine. Of those, we divide that into two different categories that would be traffic offenses and community offenses. Seventy-nine percent of those hundred and fifty-nine were total of a hundred and twenty-six were traffic offenses. Those offenses are like D W I's, lack of registrations, driving after a vacation, or driving after suspensions, no insurance and speeding violations. That was a one hundred and seven percent increase over twenty twenty. Arguably, that's because Mr. Holmeyer was tired of this now.
Like I did.
Twenty-one percent of those offenses were community offenses and that totals thirty-nine and that was a hundred and sixty percent increase over twenty twenty. I'll let those two fight over who was responsible for that hundred and sixty percent increase. Community offenses are like domestic assaults, domestic assault, no contact order violations, that disorderly conducts and hazardous conditions tickets. And an update from the from the report that was provided, a hundred percent of the twenty twenty-one cases have reached dispositions. Now that could be fines or guilty pleas or actual jail time. So the Goodview County Courts have emphasized resolving the backlog of cases that was a result of the pandemic and we've done our part to make sure that those cases get resolved and that we stay on track. So the other part of it is the time that we spend actually doing this work. We spend an average of almost eleven hours a month working on Kenyon criminal matters. That includes attending hearings, which is now they're transitioning back to in-person hearings. So for the longest time, they just had Zoom hearings and now that the courts are starting to open up a little bit more, we're going back into person in Goodview, in Redmond. So that also includes reviewing police reports for charging consultation and making ourselves available to the police to resolve civil and criminal matters or determine whether there's civil or criminal matters, preparing discovery and criminal complaints and pleadings. The most important part maybe would be the fine revenue that is generated. Six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-six cents was generated in the year twenty twenty-one and that was an increase of two hundred and forty-one percent over twenty twenty. Other than that, it is an honor and a pleasure to serve the city of Kenyon as the city prosecutor and I look forward to continuing. Any questions? None. I was told there was gonna be no question.
Thank you, A.J.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go online if I excuse myself.
No, it's nice. I'll go.
Okay. We're ready for engineering. How about you?
Just one thing on the agenda tonight. We have received proposals for the North Street Drainage Project. So if you remember, there was just some drainage improvements to the north of North Street. You have two separate areas. One's called the base project and another is some alternate work. Received eight proposals for the work and the low, the low price came in from the cook drainage. So the total between the base work and the alternate is forty-six thousand eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents, which is about ten thousand dollars below what I estimated. So I've got a good price for the work. I spoke with the contractor. I don't have any concerns with him here right now. So the city would like to move forward with the project. The recommendation would be to award it to.
Quite a range between your low end and high end on the bids.
Yep, that is the world we are currently living in here right now. This is on smaller projects, there's going to be more spread than a larger project, but there's a lot of pricing coming in. Generally higher than normal.
Is that kind of like what last time where you were saying sometimes those people have to rent more, get more equipment or different equipment or something like that? That's why they're so high or they're just trying to get a lot of money?
No, right, well, right now, there's a lot of work out there and materials have gone up significantly. So between those two, I mean, that's that's a big component of the pricing, but a lot of it right now, you get some of these really high numbers that are in here, they're probably pretty full and don't really care if they get it or not.
Oh, okay, sure.
The number.
Right in, okay, got it.
Anybody else have any comments, questions on it? So we have to make a decision. Are we going forward with that? Or put it on the back burner?
I will make a motion to higher de-cook drainage or the drainage improvements.
Okay.
If you could clarify, that would be including.
Yeah.
Oh, and that would be including the base and alternate work. I'll second that.
Okay, is there any questions on it? Anymore? Not? Well. I have a motion on it to accept North Street Drainage update with, let's see, what was it? The cook drainage? And that's for the base and the alternate, alternate, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay, I got that out of the way. That was fast, Jerry. Oh, we got to get. We'll let Mr. Scott Riggs, how about you?
I will jump in. Thank you, Mayor. First item we have under legal is the annual L M C I T liability coverage waiver form. You submit this every year. In my time here, we have never waived coverage. So on page thirty-two of your packet, there's two boxes to check. One does not waive or waves. We've always checked the do- does not waive and you keep the liability caps in place and that is the recommendation from myself and I think Mark as well.
So what are the liability limits again?
Five hundred, five hundred thousand for individual and one point five million for total for from any incident that you would have. What it means by not waiving that is it says those caps are in place. So if there's an incident, no matter what happens, no matter how many people are involved, the torque cap would provide under state statute, one point five million available of liability coverage. That's the most anybody could get. Now, there have been some cases in recent time where that amount has been challenged, but the legislature has kept that in place. So there are some cities, bigger cities typically, that do waive those liability caps, go beyond the one point five and they buy insurance to be higher. You certainly can do that, but it'll cost you more money.
Okay.
What what is the reason why why the bigger cities would do that?
More claims. They have multiple claims. They may have, you know, bigger incidents with things. St. Paul obviously had a pipeline burst that had a gas pipeline where there are numerous individuals that were hurt, that type of thing, where there wouldn't be a lot of dollars available to compensate.
Sure, and the residents of the city would take it out on their council if they got.
Potentially, and that's where the legislature also starts rethinking whether there should be higher caps or a court looks at it and says that's not fair. You know, that's that's a possibility, but the reality is for, you know, that's a much bigger community than Kenyon.
Oh, yeah.
So you can spread those costs of getting higher dollar amounts across much, much more of a population.
Yep. How many claims do we usually submit a year? Is it a handful? Yeah, I wouldn't think it'd be too many.
You know, this this year and the end of last year, we probably have five, four or five. You know, the the most current one being the one that Mr. Holmeyer was in with the.
Oh, sure. Yep.
We had damage to the roof.
Yep.
And there we're still trying to get them to cover more of that. The legs will have not too many times we have injuries. It's usually more property casualty kind of losses, like people related losses.
Sure.
That's that's where your higher dollar amounts will be. Keep in mind that when we've got construction contracts that we're doing, we make the contractor get insurance for us there as well to cover for damage issues, liability, things like that. So it's not like this is the only source, but this is the overarching source for liability claims like slip and falls, something, somebody falls down at the library at one of the parks, things like that. That's what this covers.
But, you know, the league has is a trust, so basically it's like self-insurance rule and then they carry excess insurance for claims that are over a certain dollar amount.
Yep.
So like in the state officer Holmeyer's accident, that was a very good example of where we have full kind of replacements and we had an old squad that wasn't really worth that much and we got it. Seventeen plus seventeen plus thousand, I would be looking at all the equipment and everything. So you know, it really helped us tremendously because we had to buy new, you know, we bought that new twenty-two Ford interceptor SUV that that paid for a good portion of that, where if we had sold that car outright, we wouldn't have got maybe a third of it.
At the most.
We wouldn't have got anything for the equipment. So I mean, actually, it was, we came out on that pretty well, but unfortunately, you hate to see the just the whole kind of accident and what happened.
It's almost.
Officer in a lot of danger for no reason.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I will say this. I worked at the league for four and a half years before I went into private practice. It's pretty hard to beat the insurance coverage you get through the league of cities as Mark described. What you're talking about right here is whether if if items and we have an accident like that and another individual is hurt, that's what this torque cap applies to. So it's it's one component of many components the league ensures the city for.
We've been following it along for a number of years already, so I'd say we should follow, continue on with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
That's the recommendation. You just need a simple motion.
And that is the one to does not waive.
Correct.
Okay, I will make that motion then that we're going for the limit coverage liability. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it does not waive the monetary limits.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do you have any questions on it? I made the motion. We need a second. Okay. Motion has been made and second. Are there any more questions on it? Okay. Motion been made then and second for liability coverage. The waiver does not waive the monetary limits. All in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay, got it.
Thank you. Second item is a vacation request for the alley north of First Street by the class. Hey, Doug, haven't seen you in a while, so.
You're lucky.
Uh, you've got a pretty good explanation there that Holly had put in, you as well as the letter from Doug that you have explaining it. I believe that Wayne has looked at this as well, walked the area. Typically, when we have property like this, it there isn't a big issue with vacating it. I would say it's it's fine to vacate. The one thing we do have, Wayne, I believe, is we have a we have a sanitary line crossing the property there.
Yes.
Okay, we would have to preserve an easement there. As long as we do that, I would recommend it's fine to go forward unless Mark, Mark's got any other comments. I think it's something you do.
I don't have any other comments. It's not an area that's ever gonna get developed.
No.
Um, the, excuse me, the, the, sort of made cross the diagonal angle, actually crossed the line and crossed across that, that right away. So basically, if we keep an easement over the right of way, that's you know, all there is in there is that one line, but then we'll be fine.
Yep. Absolutely. And what you have before you tonight is really just to explore this. We typically bring it to you. Council says, yes, let's go forward and then we start the process, which is a, we have to notice a public hearing, hold a public hearing, you adopt the resolution and then the vacation comes into being. So it's a recommendation, you just, by consensus, say staff, go ahead, publish the notice and you'll have it back at your next meeting.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, we don't, we have enough streets we need to take care of, so if we can remove one from the list, I think that's a benefit for everybody.
With a lot of weeds growing.
Right. Do you need a motion?
If you're, if you four are fine with it, we will, Mark will take care of it, get it directed, we'll put together the materials and each the next meeting, we'll get it publicly noticed and you'll have a resolution that will allow the vacation to occur, that gets filed. We will retain an easement and then the property will, for the right of way, will be split between each party on either side of the property.
Doug, are you able to work with the easement?
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked to Tommy along with Doug and his wife yesterday again and Wayne has mentioned everything. I was fine with him on it. Mark had also given your blessings on it. And now the attorney Riggs has given a blessing on it. I feel that it would be a good, a good thing going forward. I have heard absolutely no complaints at all. The only one that there was a tad. And the only ones that that had a question in the beginning of it was Snowmobile Club has a trail that goes down through there and it was on a little bit of their property that they purchased. So what was gonna do is they've already moved or will be moving the trail further down into the flatland area. So that's no problem with them whatsoever either. So
well, the public.
Main thing is the easement.
Yeah, we, yeah, the public hearing would be June fourteenth or the next.
Yeah.
Then you'll get us.
Yep, we'll we'll get the the notice together for that and the resolution as well and we'll have the easement document that we'll we'll have to retain. So.
Okay.
Yeah. That's it. Nothing further on that.
Okay, so it's locked down.
Right.
Ready to go for it. Start cutting trees. Okay, attorney Riggs.
Fourteen, we'll have to, we have to, we notify property owners.
We do, we have to publish the notice, actually. We'll notify property owners around there.
Was that three hundred feet?
Typically, that's what it is. Here, it's usually a budding for a vacation, so it's really probably probably only two property owners, yourselves and the Tammy's, but but we'll we'll we usually overnotice for these types of things.
Okay. You can also suggest.
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Old business.
We have no, nothing.
Okay, we'll pass that up then. We can move on to new business. Item A, economic community development staffing through Seda. Chris, do you like to step up, please?
So.
Yeah.
Good and loud, that's all we need.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see everybody tonight, council. A lot of familiar faces that worked with E D A on various projects over the years. But for folks that don't know, we are based in the community and economic development associates, we're based out of Chapel, Rochester. Staffing services for rural communities. For rural communities in Minnesota, Iowa, we're established, it's played when it comes to economic development, putting projects together. So I've worked a long time with Mark and and staff and and some of you on E D A, various projects, some of the most recent ones was putting together some marketing materials for your industrial park, as well as securing a grant for that industrial park in the state of Minnesota. So we've been working with Kenny for a while, but at the last E D A meeting, we were asked to come here and present the possibility of providing some in-house staffing services on an ongoing basis. It seemed like E D A was seeking orders maybe one day a week for the rest of the year, just to see, get it, get up and running essentially with with that type of work and taking some things off Mark's plate, picture, but then maybe reevaluating towards the end of the year to see how it worked, what did work, what didn't work, if there's not time, if it's too much, that kind of thing. So we did put a proposal together for Mark with the, I didn't, assuming they have that, the patent or great, we have all that information too. That'll give kind of the overview of who we are and what we do if you haven't seen that information before. We also had a proposal for a contract that the typical services, it's a pretty flexible relationship. We only have a thirty day out if something isn't working either for you or for us. So we don't have any long-term agreements on that part. Our our annual price for one day a week is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. The more time you buy with us, the better it will be on our hourly rate. But we're we're proreading that, I think we're starting maybe July first or somewhere thereabouts. So we're open on that end, Mark, you know, if there's something that you guys want to see sooner or later or. Serious questions, kind of talk about what we do, what we might be able to do. We've talked with E D A over the last several months. It seems like marketing in particular, the industrial park as well as engaging with businesses in the community has really been one of their highest priorities, but we would work with the E D A, work with Mark, with the other staff and the council to make sure that the work that the E D A has in place gets moved forward as well as adding to that additional, additional resources that will be something. And then for have been involved with how Seda works in the past. City Hall, one day a week, two days a week, whatever, whatever it is that works for a county. And the idea being that it's kind of part key, it's part of the Kenyan team, but they also have the rest of the Seda team by the end of the year. First, for example, not just getting Joel, for example, he would be someone that could get in the whole thirty-five, fifty-six of us that that can, you know, from our experience, bring our talent, and look back, I think that's something that, you know, Mark, as we've worked together over the years, we brought different people in with different talents, with different projects, whether that was writing the grant or doing marketing or that type of thing. So we have kind of a wide variety of of products that we've been involved with. It's kind of that typical seed of community that we work with above sixty or seventy, so communities that we do relationships, but but, you know, some of the some of the cities we've been with very recently, we've seen a lot of growth, but we got several that have been with us since just about the beginning of of Seda when we started in eighty-six. So yes, Mark, the council, are there any questions that I didn't cover in the background, but I'd be actually very happy to talk more about the contract, more about what we can do or just, you know, answer questions and see.
So the E D A's been working with Seda probably the last two years with like marketing, developing marketing materials for the business park. They've probably seen some flyer that carry profile. They've also helped us with putting together a marketing plan, getting our lots listed on some commercial real estate sites, things like that. So the E D A met in the way rolling. We've been talking about this on and off for several months, but they recommended, or forwarded to us, recommended to post it up. Higher Seda one day a week. We talked about some lesser time options. Talked about eight hours and they were definitely behind eight hours a week. What I would do in the short term for part of the cost of that, what I'd recommend is we use some of that public. But anyway, yeah, we're, the E D A was think that there's, besides a business park, also probably the downtown. Do some things to help with the downtown. It's existing. If it's a, somebody that's trying to look at opening a business or just other stuff, things, but for an economic development standpoint, those are the two things. Areas E D A would like to see Seda work out, be a business partner in downtown. Areas EDA would like to see CETA work out, be a business partner with downtown. Like this too, with the annual report. What other communities have done.
Mary, you were there. We were at, you know, at the EDA meeting. You would like to give the rest of the council your opinion on it?
Well, yeah, because I didn't really, when he came, I mean, we've been working with him for, but I didn't like when he came, I was like, what is he talking about? You know, like, but, but now, but now, you know, after explaining at the EDA meeting, you know, and we went over it kind of more in depth. But, I mean, and of course, you know, they're helping us with the business park and all that. But like, I just kind of, I mean, I took it from my own example when I came here and I had a business. I just like opened it and nobody came to, like, nobody came to talk, like, I had no idea what I was doing. I mean, I, you know what I mean? Like, no, but I had no, I didn't know I could get help. I didn't know what I, you know, I didn't know how to connect with this, you know? And I think there, that's just one of the things they would do is help new businesses connect or reach out to people to come into our, like vacant, you know? Trash-filled store or something that we all don't like. And, you know, just stuff like that, you know, ways to clean that up or ways to beautify it. And I mean, that would help. If, if there would have been someone in place when I came here, it would have been a lot easier. You know, for me to stay, so. I mean, and that there's a million other things they do, but that was just, I related to that right away. I was like, that would be, that would have been very, very helpful.
I'm gonna jump in a little bit. Doug, you are in business. Was there anything, was there any help that was given to you, you know, when you started out?
Yeah, and I, and I think you can help with the bill, you know, your building and everything, you know, stuff you don't even think about when you're opening. I mean, you're just trying to get it up and running. Right. Yeah. Yeah, so it's like there's a consultant available to us, you know, tell the, and that's kind of nice.
You got like the idea of using the COVID money for that, then anything that we can do to support to get businesses in town. Yeah.
Actually, at that meeting, Mary, you know yourself, anyway, there was quite a lot of discussion. It took longer. I mean, I think it got pretty well-thrashed over, you know, and everybody really come up with. With a decision as to what they wanted to go with. So I feel, you know, from my point, it's well, well worthwhile. And like Mary said, we got two examples right here. We have you, Doug Glad, with Sif, we have Mary, you with your flower shop. I think that it would be money well spent.
They're already familiar with the community and they work with other small.
And not only this year, Chris, it is that is flexible on the, the, the amount of time that we go forth. If we feel that we want to increase it, okay, and if we want to decrease it, okay, right? Yeah.
Particular time period.
Yeah.
Just about whatever you want. What would you like to see happen? Are you getting the bang for the buck out of it? Contracts up are, you get one person. One, one person that's responsible. Prospect, that type of stuff off display. That's all fluid.
Yeah, and then the timing, and I also think the timing, you know, I mean, we have so many people that, there's so many, I mean, we have a new business coming in, right? Like the end of summer, the new restaurant, but then, I mean, if you think of all the people that are gonna retire pretty soon. And we're gonna hopefully, you know, we want to fill those places up, so they're not just sitting there and, yeah.
Tonight, we have somebody ready to go with who they are, that, that, that type of thing. But we are complex. Have somebody.
Well, we, our next regular EDA meeting is for Tuesday in July, so it might work pretty well from a timing standpoint. You know, if they start in July.
I don't know if it was discussed or not, but. Put you in the hot seat. Are you gonna have somebody here for council meeting on a regular basis for an update?
That's up to you guys. Typically, what we would do at the end of the month is we have some sort of a report, you know, at our EDA.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll be at every council meeting, because they're here eight hours a week, but I, I certainly would say there'll be an update and they'll be at some of the council meetings. They need to be up.
If, if nothing else, the information coming out in the form of a report.
No, that's fine. I would say for the EDA meeting, you know, that's the beginning of it, the start. But I do think that we should have something, somewhat of a monthly report, you know, just telling us what you're doing. And where, where you stand. So at least we got something to look at. Okay, well, we're gonna set it for the, every.
Um, well, so you'd have a motion.
Yeah.
That would set hiring contracted with CETA for a community development person. Eight hours a week, basically.
Yeah, one day per week.
Yeah.
And the price on it is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Yep.
Is that correct, Chris? Oh.
We can say that in minutes, that the annual cost for twenty-two is.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, seven.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we always renew our contracts at the end of the year, so if there's a price adjustment or time adjustment.
Okay.
Things that would happen then, but that's.
Council, you have any more discussion on it?
I think it's good, just to have expertise to help navigate, you know, I think there, there are a lot of programs out there, but people don't know how to access them. There's hoops and hurdles you have to get through. You bring that expertise and can help them get through the, the red tape. I think that's good. So. So I'll move that we go forward with the contract. Starting July first.
Okay, you want, is that all we need?
I would think so.
Okay, then I will send it, I will second it.
Okay, motion then has been made and second for, for CETA to be here one day per week. And actually, the total for the full year is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy, but it will be split back starting January or July first. So, okay, any other discussion on it? Must have been made. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Well, you're in business. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next one's an easy one. Pro Memorial Day Parade for May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two, it should be on there instead of twenty-one.
And Mayor, it's not that easy because Memorial Day is actually May thirtieth. So I.
I didn't write this, okay.
No, I.
It's on the, on the warrant.
Okay, I need.
Right in the minutes.
Yep.
Okay, I haven't got that far into here yet.
So I, I just, let's make sure we get the right day.
May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. I, I'm reading the hard copy.
Yep.
It works a little easier for.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the Memorial Day Parade for May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, I'm gonna second that one then, so I don't think there's any discussion on it. So all of you in favor of the Memorial Day Parade for May the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 it's passed. Item C. Prove transfer of three thousand dollars from the Swimming Pool Special Donations Fund to Public Works Capital Fund. And Wayne Erie, Public Works Director, do you wish to say something on this here or let it up to Mark or how?
There was just a donation we received.
Yep.
So it's still for the pool? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we're just gonna put it to use.
I'll make a motion to transfer the funds, three thousand dollars from the swimming pool donations to the Public Works Capital Fund.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made and second to transfer the three thousand dollars from the Swimming Pool Special Donations Fund to Public Works Capital Funds. And all in favor, would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, it's passed. You know, we gotta do is thank the Snowmobile Club for. They put out a lot of money throughout the years for City of Kenyon itself. And I know that they've got some coming up for Rosefest also. Okay. Next one, farmer's market update, Park and Recreation Board. I'm not.
So.
I'm familiar on a.
This is just a informational, information update, but Park and Rec is going to start a farmer's market. Which would be in the parking lot of the first, even Jockal Lutheran Church. It would be the third Thursday of every month from four to seven P M. And Kim, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Well, we put the post out that we were going to be doing it and created that email for people to reach out. And my phone was blowing up that next day.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in it, a lot of, lot of thankful citizens that were starting it. And then as well as vendors that are signing up, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Great for good weather that first night to kick us off, and so that'll be May nineteenth will be the first one, so. Looking forward to it.
Yes, pretty exciting.
Great.
Yeah, that is excellent.
Well, Kim, thank you for stepping up. Okay. Item E. Update on Emerald Ash Bore found in the city. That again is, we'll look at Wayne, do you wish to have some more to say for it?
Yeah, there's, looks like an Emerald Ash, I mean, a wasp or something flying around here. So basically, we just want to bring the council up to speed on this. The Emerald Ash Bore was identified in April in the city, is that?
Yeah.
And it was first identified in the state in two thousand and eight, from what I've been able to read from the Department of Ag and the D N R. And the other literature that I've looked at online. It's spread through much of southeastern Minnesota since then. Rochester and all the areas around there have been a hot zone for well over ten years. Wayne's been surveying right of ways, parks, other city lands since then. Trees that are infected or at risk will be removed, when I say this, on city property as much as we can. Due to cost, there's also, and Wayne can probably elaborate on this, there's also treatment that we're gonna look at for some of the trees. So basically, one thing I want to be very clear about, on private property, it's the owner's responsibility to monitor and remove trees. We are gonna look at our ordinances to see if there's, if they need to be revised to, you know, to reflect this. Because if we get infected trees that need to be removed, it's up to the property owners to remove them. And I do want to be clear that, you know, the city is not gonna remove trees on private property, because I'm certain we're gonna get questions about this. The city can not remove trees on private property is about the best way we can put it. We'll also be working, work with Scott on this to look at city ordinances in response to removing infected trees on private property. And we will have updates at further council meetings. So Wayne, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, just the department's man guy, John. The biggest deal with it is. They just start shattering and falling down. Chemical treatments you can do. I've heard mixed results. They said it do work, but if the tree's infected already, it's not that great. Has an ash treated it, they're not, they're not gonna start treating it now. Depends on the site and treatment. Treat a tree still. Biggest thing they focus on. Just removing the trees before they become hazardous or harmful. Choose to replant. Biggest fear is the next.
Expensive. It's expensive to cut a tree down.
Is there some sort of flyer or something that we could send out with the, like, the utility bills to the residents and then to show them what to look for? How to treat them, what, what to do, as well as.
Yeah, there's, like, what you saw in the package.
Okay.
I, I'm looking for, what I was looking for was a, like, a two-page summary. And there really wasn't a two-page summary, you know, like, to give to the council. There's a lot of information. So we, you know, Wayne gave me a bunch of stuff and I looked online and I went with some of what Wayne gave me, just to kind of give the council some flavor of this. So if I could find something that we can do that to, in one page, I'll do it. But so far, I haven't really had, found anything that I feel is clear and summary, you know, concise for people to read. That's not, you know, five pages of stuff, but yeah, we're still looking for that. You know, we'll also put something in the newsletter, on the Facebook page, the webpage, the queue, all that kind of stuff. But again, we have to kind of get it, get it, get it framed up in, you know, five sentences or less to pull something. And then we can put information on the website, though. That's one thing we're gonna do is, you know, we can put like all that stuff that was in the packet and more. We can put links to websites and different stuff on, on the website. We can certainly do that. So, yeah, we are gonna be doing more of that.
Okay.
If you wanna see the trees down at Veterans Park, I suggest you go down there tonight yet, because they're gonna start on them tomorrow, going down. And I can give you a little bit of information on what we plan on doing as soon as the stumps and that are out, is bringing in black dirt. Possibly planting grass, but we will have trees this fall. It won't be as many as what there are now. We want more sunshine. Now, I also found. I got two trees that got to go down too in the Boulevard. They're had it. So we'll have to take them down on our property. And Scott, turn your rigs, I got a question for you. What happens if somebody refuses to take them down? Is there a mandatory thing? Is there?
That's what we'll look at the ordinances for. But typically, what happens if there's somebody refusing to remove a hazardous tree that can affect public property, particularly public property, but even private property, we do have some mechanisms to go in and we can remove it, but then they the property owner is charged back. They're assessed for the full costs of that. It's not the way you want to operate. It happens very, very infrequently, but it's a possibility. But we'll look at the ordinances to make sure that's there and that's ready in case.
I'm just worried about like if somebody's poor.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, if you would have asked me five years ago to cut down a tree and give you a thousand, I mean, I just couldn't. It would be impossible. So I mean, maybe if there's somebody you know, that can't maybe, I don't know if there's a some sort of help or you know, something.
I don't know if there is much.
You know, I don't know, but I mean, that would be hard.
And we don't want to just go out with the hammer and make people cut them down, you know, but it
Yeah, I mean.
becomes more if it becomes a a threat to you know, other threat to right of way or public land or whatever.
And I think people would, you know, I'm talking about somebody who would want to do it, you know.
Right.
But just would maybe need, I don't know, I'm just.
It's in the backyard or.
We have people that aren't loaded rich. It's like a grand to cut a tree down.
Oh, at least.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If it's a big tree, yeah.
This does give people attention.
Some time to save up. Okay, okay. So then, yeah, look now because you might need to save for five years to cut your tree down. I mean, really, it's I just, I want the most expense. I get why it is. Anybody needs a career, they should be a tree cutter on money.
Mark, you may want to reach out to Soil and Water Conservation. They might have flyers on this. I know they do a lot of stuff with trees that, yeah, Good You County Soil and Water. I don't know if they do, but I know they they do a lot of plea tree planting programs and things. They might have something that would work.
There's a ton of.
Yeah. Sure, I but people don't want to do that in the in if we're if we're going to insert something in a utility bill, it's got to be clear and concise. So because if the first thing I want to know is, does it affect my trees and it limited to the ash trees, right? Yeah, so that that I think is the first thing people are going to want to look at. And then, you know, so we want to make it clear and concise so people know if it's going to affect them or not.
If people call us and they say, we just want to know if we have them on our property, is that something, can you tell, do kind of know what they look like or?
Yeah.
You've been to training for the training for this, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, we don't want it to become a.
Yeah.
Not going to babysit.
No.
Yeah, but we want to help people out.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, if there's any other discussion on it, we'll move on to item F is a request to purchase a Lucas CPR machine for the Kenyan Fire Department. We have a price on it, everything that's here in front of.
Yeah, nineteen thousand one sixty eight. You've also got pictures of it in your packet.
Yeah.
And this would be another thing that I would suggest if you move ahead with this, that we take all or a lot of this out of COVID, because I certainly think this, if there isn't a more closely related kind of thing for COVID funding, I don't know what is. You know, so. Well, if there's any questions on any of the.
By the way, Attorney Riggs has approved every bit of this, is that correct?
Oh, this is fine. Yeah, this is a valid purchase, no question.
So there's no question about it on that part. So I'm going to make the motion anyway to request purchase of CPR machine for the Kenyan Fire Department.
I will second it.
Okay, any other questions on it? Okay, motion been made and second purchase CPR machine for the Kenyan Fire Department. All in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes pass, okay. Get down to hurry here. Is there anything, anything else that's?
Was there anything in the packet that showed what they look like?
No, there's a description though. I looked it up online too.
Okay, I can pass out here. Pass around some pictures. Apparently, they didn't get on Granicus. Here's some.
Well, tell us, tell us what, how, how, give us a situation which you'd use it and how you'd use it.
So a person is in cardiac arrest. It's a board that gets slipped under his back. I heard that's all one.
Again.
Machine is passing time. In simple terms, it's just like a big triangle. They put someone on their chest, there's a plunger in the middle, and it does. It just compresses. Ever done CPR, it's a student tire. Sometimes pull up without it. In the full, full areas. It's a space restraint, it's a saber and sometimes it's pulse. Battery powered and it does.
Less room for error.
Okay, if there's any other questions or things to bring up with going with other business. Schedule of upcoming meetings will be K M U meeting will be Tuesday.
May. Well, do you want to move ahead with purchasing this? We'd need a motion.
They did.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. So who made the, I'm so busy.
Doug and Mary.
Motion, and then we have questions.
Yeah.
Mark's doing two jobs at once.
I'm doing the minutes, yeah.
We'll give you a break.
I can always check the, check the tape.
You want to put it down? That's fine. We can wait for you.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, we can move on then to other business. Schedule of upcoming meetings will be K M U meeting will be Tuesday, May the seventeenth at two P M. Next city council meeting will be Tuesday, June the fourteenth at seven P M. And then we can go on with council and staff general comments. And Mark will get you off of the hook right away. Have you got anything to say?
Nope, I don't have anything, Mayor.
How about you, Derek?
As well.
Thank you.
I had something, but I forgot what it was I was going to mention, but oh, I do know. Thank you for getting the potholes and stuff. You know, the forgot the name of it. Yeah. Okay, that's good. Yeah, it's made a considerable difference on it. So appreciate that. So that's my comment. How about yours, Mary?
Um, well, I just have one little thing about Doug, when you, we were looking at that stuff and they were like you know, fight, plotting the land or where it all is. Wasn't there like a, I'm just for Parks and Rec, there was like a chunk of land. I don't know what I was saying when, I don't remember our conversations a little bit. We that Parks and Rec should look at that because that survey, because there's like a chunk of land that might, we might be able to use for the trail. Remember, we were talking about that? That was like part of the road that's never going to happen down below. And I thought, well, that's just there and the city owns it. And I don't know if we knew that we owned that before, like maybe that's something you could look at. It's like a yeah, but there was like another part of it. I don't know. It's just something to, I just think Parks and Rec might want to look, maybe talk to you about it. Because, you know, we want that trail to go through. And I'm like, oh, that would be a nice area because.
For a, for a future trail.
Or a future trail. Yeah, or future trail. I know because it's, that's the place where we kind of have that problem because there's a farmer that owns that land there or whatever, Nielsen or right? Is it Nielsen?
Yeah.
But I don't know. It it's just something I think just needs to be looked at further. I mean, I I just, I remember you were showing me all that land and I was like. Yeah, goes through his field, right? Yeah, so that's like that would eliminate part of that problem.
Yeah, we can look at that. And the city owns, you know, along the river there, there's several parcels that the city got possession of a few years ago.
Yeah, I I just thought that was interesting. I just, I just, it's an interesting thing that I thought maybe could be looked at in the future, Parks and Rec or something.
Sure.
That's all.
Thank you, Mary. Dan, how about you?
No.
Kim?
Nothing.
That's different. How about you, Chief, which we forgot?
Um, like the so you know, yeah, that's what I was gonna, yeah, if you want to just bring it up, we'll just put it on next month. Yeah, we'll just do them both. You might have some policies next month too. So. Yeah, I knew I forgot something. That was it.
One thing I do want to mention is that we have some increasing development to so we're able to get
Okay, well, I do thank you and I'm sure the citizens of Kenyon do too for what you guys are doing. We're seeing major improvements. Thank you very much, Chief. Anybody else have anything to say? Not, we can call for adjournment. Get a motion on it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Been made and second to adjourn the city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass.